I would like to call the City Council meeting for the city of Clear Lake, the Redevelopment Recaster Agency. Here in Clear Lake City Hall, Council Chambers at 1-405-0 Olympic Drive in Clear Lake, California, 95422. Today is Thursday, February 9th at 6:00 PM. And Clerk, could you call and roll?
Councilmember Harris.
Present.
Councilmember Bennett.
Present.
Vice Mayor Sabatier.
Here.
And Mayor Perdak.
Here.
Councilmember Overton is absent due to illness.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Bennett, would you lead us in the pledge?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're amazed standing, Mr. Harris? We have many issues facing our country today. If you would just take a moment, we'd appreciate your kind thoughts, your prayer for wisdom tonight as we move forward through some floods and some bad weather. Pray for our first responders, our law enforcement, our public work crews that are out there through the nights keeping our roads and our communities safe. Thank you very much. When you're out on those roads, please drive safely. Give everybody a break. Mr. Jones, is there any change to the agenda?
No, and we recommend adopting it as stated.
Thank you.
There is one change. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. I want you to advise us what that change would be.
Item number two will be postponed to a future meeting.
In presentation?
In your presentation.
Thank you. We will reschedule that. Now I have the privilege and pleasure to call a friend up to the podium. Mr. Mayo?
Yes.
Would you join me in the front?
Sure.
It's one of those fun things I get to do.
Good answer.
I've known Mr. Mayo, I call him Rick, for, what, 20 years? Maybe a little longer.
Twenty-five now.
Twenty-five now?
Yeah.
Go with that. Anyway, thank you for your service. Thank you for your help through our community, and it's been a pleasure knowing you all these years. I didn't know Hazel was coming back, too. Good to see you.
I just found her at work.
As Secretary.
She's been working very hard. I know that for a fact. Anyway, without further ado, February has been designated Black History Month, and as the mayor of the city of Clear Lake, we want to make sure we recognize that and recognize the good people and the good work that's been done. So with that, if you'll bear with me as I read this proclamation. Whereas, February 2017, in the city of Clear Lake, California, the Lake County Branch of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, the NAACP, is officially celebrating Black History Month, which dates back to 1929, when Dr. Carter G. Woodson set aside a special period of time in February to recognize the heritage and achievements of Black Americans. And whereas, while the history of Black Americans is also the story of countless nameless heroes brought to our shores who endured lives of bondage and oppression, deprivation of their civil rights, and the ravages of bigotry and racism, it is a history for which most of the chapters have yet to be written, as Black Americans contribute to the American promise. And whereas, for generations, African-Americans have strengthened our nation by urging reforms, overcoming obstacles, and breaking down barriers. And whereas, African-Americans like Martin Luther King Jr. perfect a proud legacy of courage and dedication that is helping to guide our nation's success and prosperity, visionary leaders from the past like John Lewis, Edgar Evers, Malcolm X, Rosa Parks, Julian Bond possessed clarity of purpose and were instrumental in exposing and addressing the issues that threatened our founding principles. And whereas, the Lake County Branch of the NAACP is dedicated to the principles fostering civic, economic, and educational programs, and social justice throughout the city of Clear Lake, and is dedicated to encouraging reflections of a rich history of teaching of African-American histories and bearing witness to the progress, beauty, and achievements they have made throughout our community. And whereas, it is fitting that we set aside this month as a special time to acknowledge this important segment of our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the city of Clear Lake encourages all of our citizens to join in celebrating the diversity of character in our community and highlight the importance of sharing our culture, customs, and traditions with all those around us. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Before you leave, I'd like to make a little short statement. I'll give that up to you.
Black history is rooted in the American history, and I'd like to not only recognize all of my forefathers and the rest of Black Americans who have contributed to so much, but we need to also recognize our communities of Clear Lake, Lakeport, Milltown. In Clear Lake, Joe Bennett was the first African-American elected to the city of Clear Lake as a city council member. I myself was the first African-American appointed to the Clear Lake Planning Commission for two unexpired terms in the 90s. Forrest Brumfield was the first African-American elected to the Board of Supervisors. And now we have Simon Moke, the first Native American elected to the Board of Supervisors in our county. So all a part of Black history, we all contribute, and we, some of us are still alive to witness it. So I thank you so much for the proclamation, and we've been doing this for many, many years, and I thank the city of Clear Lake. But we have a very diverse community here, and we will continue to work together to make this a better place for everyone to live.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming, everyone. And next, it's my pleasure and privilege to introduce Acting Chief Lieutenant Tim Selly, who is going to provide us with his Clear Lake Police Department annual report. Looking sharp, by the way, Lieutenant.
Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to make this presentation before you tonight. First, I want to thank a couple people. Unfortunately, they're not here. They're either home with their family or work in the street. But this wouldn't have been possible without Sergeant Snyder, Sergeant Tim Hobbs, and Sheriff Ben Askett. So I really want to thank them for their hard work throughout the year. I want to thank all of our staff, because they really did a lot of good work, and I hope that you will see that in this report. So the Clear Lake Police Department mission, this is what we do every day, or this is what we try to do every day. That is to enhance public safety by providing professional, trustworthy service in partnership with the community. The purpose of this annual report is to provide you a snapshot of the work that we accomplished as a team. It is also to provide transparency to the Clear Lake Police Department, identify our accomplishments, as well as the things that we would like to improve. And I believe that in order to effect change, it's important to understand where we come from. A little bit of background before we get started. In October 2015, Chief Klossman was injured during an on-the-job critical incident. In December, Chief Klossman was placed on injury leave. At that time, our chief and city manager, Gray Folsom, decided that I would take on the duties as the acting chief of police until Klossman's return. It's now been over a year. Outside influence considerations that I'd like you to consider while we're going through this report. AB 109 passed in 2011. This was the realignment of previously sentenced state prisoners, placing the burdens back onto local jurisdictions. Just tidbit of information, the county jail population capacity is around 280, and there were times the population's near 400. Proposition 47 passed in 2014. That is the measure that reduced certain felony crimes back to misdemeanors. This effectively reduced the county jail population, putting those folks back out on the street. Unfortunately, it has had a negative effect on our crime rates. This is an excerpt from Cal Chief's Prop 47 report quoted. Crime, particularly property crimes, increased sharply after the State Neighborhoods Act and Schools Act, Proposition 47, was implemented in California. There had been a general downtrend of decreasing crime in the past 10 years in the United States, including California, from 2000 to 2014, a trend that reversed sharply in 2015, partly so in the case of property crime, where California's increased stand and start comparison with the continuing decrease in the rest of the country. And for the first time in 20 years, California's rate of property crime exceeds that of the rest of the country. This is a graph taken from that same Cal Chief's Prop 47 report. The red line there is the national average for crime. As you can see, it's going down and continues to go down. The blue line is California. We're also going down and lower than the national average. And then you can see this mark here. That is where in October of 2011, AB 109 was implemented. And you can see that it started to spike there. Then it continued to go down a little bit, and then right here is where Prop 47 was implemented, and you can see the start upturn right there. And that's where we are. This is a chart from that same report. This is the category we're in, G5, which is 10,000 to 24,000 range or 25,000 range. 98 cities belong in that category. As you can see, property crime is up 10.59%. And this is the violent crime rate change. Same category, and the violent crime rate is up 6.18%. Combine those, that's over 16%. The national, or, excuse me, the California state is about, on average, 14% higher. In 2015, major crime statistics were up. Most concerning were increases to homicide and robberies, and particularly home invasion type robberies. Clear Lake Police Department handled 21,508 incidents in 2015. Our goals, we set goals for 2016. That was to reduce crime. It was reduce calls for service, hire employees, retain employees, increase service, and improve our customer service. That's what we set out to do, amongst other things, but that was the basis that we wanted to do. And we'll get into the annual report now. As management staff, we developed a vision for our department. We talked about the mission, that's what we do every day, but what is the result of that work? And this is what we came up with. The Clear Lake Police Department is an agency of which our community and employees can be proud. We will strive to complete our mission by maintaining high standards without compromise to honesty and integrity, while enforcing the law fairly and impartially. We will develop effective professional partnerships with our community through respect and theme compassion. That's what our major goal is. In order to enhance department operations, and because of short staffing issues and things like that, we decided we needed to restructure the organization a little bit. I put Sergeant Martin Snyder as the Support Services Commander, and I put Sergeant Tim Hobbs as the Operations Commander, essentially in charge of patrol operations. And that's what our organizational chart looks like today. As you can see, there is two distinct branches there, and I believe that is a more effective way to manage our department operations. Our operating budget is about $3.6 million. We're made up of the General Fund and Measure P. Measure Fund gives us approximately $860,000 or $854,000, as it says there. The following grants were in operation during the 2016 year. The COPS Universal Hiring Grant, and then COPS in Schools Grant, and Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant. Staffing. I'm happy to say that the Clear Lake Police Department reached budgeted staffing for sworn personnel. We were actually 21, but 22 with the grant, the COPS Grant Partnership. And then we were able to negotiate a deal with Knott Day Unified School District, and we were able to add an officer, and we're pretty happy with that. So we're at 23 and a half to half as a part-time detective. Unfortunately, even though we were at 23 and a half sworn police officers, several officers were out on long-term injury. That affects operations. We have to, you know, we, unfortunately, we're at a level of staff where if someone's gone, we feel the effects. We have to either backfill that position or something like that. And when those folks are out on long-term injury, we definitely feel that effect. Most of the time, I believe, we were operating with about 10 or 12 patrol officers. That's the bulk of the people doing the calls. Dispatch staffing was short to employees most of the year. We have five budgeted dispatchers. That means we were down to three. And I'm happy to say that I offered a job. Actually, we sworn a dispatcher last week, so she started. And that leaves us with one vacancy. We have a part-time person. We were able to fill that with a part-time person for now. We're going to try to keep that person on through salary savings and that sort of thing, so that until those dispatchers can be trained. I was able to give a conditional job offer to another dispatcher, and she will start in a couple of weeks. Now, that will bring us up to fully budgeted staff and dispatching. And we're very excited about that, because it's been about seven years since we've been up to staff in dispatch. Part of that work is, I must thank you guys for negotiating with the POA, with those dispatchers who are much, much needed. This is a little snapshot of some of the work that the members of the Clear Lake Police Department did. We took 3,700 reports, that's written documents, written reports. Incidents without case numbers was about 20,467. And then we added traffic enforcement action, which was a little over 3,000. Together, all that combined, it's 24,235. As I told you before, last 2015 year, we did 21,000, so we're doing more. Part of that is because we were able to fill budgeted positions, plus I'm really proud of the work that our staff is doing. This number right here, 2,223, that's total arrests that the Clear Lake Police Department members have made. That's an average of 6.1 arrests a day. This is a snapshot. I realize it says calls for service, but that's actually incidents. That number there is the same depth. I just showed you the 24,000, somewhat changed. But this is really, this is really nice. Officer-initiated activity or incidents, over 9,000. That means either traffic stops, pedestrian contacts, security checks. Officers were able to go out and do proactive work, not just respond to calls for service. That helps with our crime rate. As you can see, 2016 year, we're doing more in every category. This is where the meat and potatoes are. This is the Part I crimes. These are the most serious crimes. This is what reported, is what's reported to the Department of Justice every year. The number that we are absolutely proud of is that number right at the top. As you remember, in the 2015 report, our homicide rate was, forgive me, but ridiculous. We had six homicides, and that's not acceptable. We developed a belief that that was directly related to marijuana industry. So that's what we did. We targeted large-scale commercial grows in marijuana. And we'll talk more about that later in the report. But that, we had actually two homicides, only, it says one, and that is because one of them is a justifiable homicide. So actually, one criminal homicide. Some of these other numbers are up, as I explained, with the effects of Prop 47 and things like that. Some larceny particularly is up. But all of our major, I would say, I would say, this one right here, negative 37%, aggravated assaults, persons crimes, they're down. Absolutely. We're a safer city than we were a year ago. And this number I highlighted, that is up 8%. Total crime overall is up 8%. But as I explained to you earlier, with the state average being almost 16, or at least cities our size at 16%, we were able to keep that at bay at half. I'm pretty proud of that. Our arrests went up 12.6% this last year. Considerations, new considerations. Prop 57 just passed. This is a measure that reduces crimes that were previously considered violent felonies. This will effectively reduce the prison population even further. With no programs in place, many of these felons will be back on the street. There's not, you know, with the elimination of parole, essentially, these folks will be released without titles, and that's really concerning to us. One of the things we did this year to help with that crime level is increase traffic enforcement. It's my belief that high visibility, proactive enforcement reduces crime. You never know, just by being there, how much crime you're going to reduce. So we designated a traffic officer for daytime and weekdays, because we were going from call to call during the daytime hours. That's where we thought we would have most effect. Unfortunately, the officer that was, there is the traffic officer, was injured in an off-duty accident, and he was out of commission, at least as a traffic officer, for about three months. But he's back, and we'll talk about his numbers shortly. So what I did is I found some old radar units on a shelf. I sent them in to get recertified and recalibrated, and we put those in service. Then I identified some funding through asset forfeiture, and I bought a LiDAR unit, which is a laser, a laser speed device. I signed traffic enforcement officer, or traffic supervisor, excuse me. The Clear Lake Police officers made 3,042 traffic enforcement actions during the 2016 This is a pie chart of our citations that were issued. 691 criminals that's usually driving on suspended driver's licenses or DUIs or something, some kind of criminal violation. The moving violation was 436, and that's the orange pie. One thing I noticed is we need to do a better job. We rely on volunteers on parking enforcement. I've spoken with the volunteer that normally issues that, and he says, you know, I've been patrolling around, and people are following the parking rules. So that's a positive sign. Some accomplishments. We worked with finance to identify unused funding and purchase two new SUV police vehicles. We used asset forfeiture to purchase needed equipment for personnel, including vehicles, entry equipment, safety gear, laptop computers, and LiDAR unit. We worked with finance and identified funding and replaced much-needed dispatch equipment. Two new software-based consoles for the dispatch center, those are up and running. Those consoles were previously over 20 years old, and at least half of it didn't work. So thank you very much for allowing us to do that. We also purchased updated body cameras. A business, local business owner helped raise the money to get that program started, and we're very thankful. Sam Polo for the Main Street Cafe did some fundraising and helped us with that. But electronic equipment wears out, and we were able to do that as well, at Sheriff, by new, updated cameras. Other accomplishments. One of the things that we did was streamline our hiring process through background investigations, and also with our health, our medical process. We decided to go with a company called Document. Before, we had turnarounds, maybe sometimes three, four weeks. Now it's just a couple days, and that's fantastic. Now, the background, some of the backgrounds, we were able to contract out with a person, because we were previously keeping those in-house. But it took the officers that were doing them away from their jobs, and so we, I looked at the costs and, you know, background, maybe we were paying $1,200 or something for, so it was a big savings there. We worked through critical incidents. We had a recent against SWAT call-out with an armed barricaded subject that was calling, saying that he was the devil, and he was God, and things like that. He had a replica firearm that looked like a pretty serious rifle, and we worked it out with the SWAT, and that came to a safe resolution, and nobody was injured or hurt. We really appreciate that. Sheriff's Office helped with that. We also had an officer-involved shooting this year. We were able to work through that with the district attorney's office and everything, and we're happy with that. We're not happy that the subject was shot, but we're happy with the way things were We added to our gang and homeless liaison program. We added two more officers to the gang program. Unfortunately, the officer that was slotted to do the homeless program is out on long-term injuries, so that suffered a little bit. We reduced citizen complaints, and I'm particularly proud of the members of our department. I went back and looked at complaints in previous years, and we averaged about 15 or so internal affairs investigations. This year, I opened up the book, and I was pleasantly surprised, we had three. All of them were internals. One was being an officer-involved shooting, so I was very pleased with that. Citizen complaints are a big thing. We do get them, but what I found is most of the time, it's just an explanation, taking time with people and explaining and sitting down. The other thing that helps is the body cameras. We can show the body cameras to that individual, and a lot of times, maybe they had a different perspective than they do after seeing what actually happened. So that's been really a big help. Other accomplishments. Training. We sent our officers to increase training this year as one of our goals. We sent them to 1,085 hours, that's 79 training classes. This does not include in-house training or non-post training. We had three officers, including myself, go through the Certified Ambassador training. We thought that was good for our community. We increased our community outreach. We went to neighborhood meetings, we went to community, neighborhood watch meetings, coffee with the cop, public, we did more public presentations. Some of this may seem familiar because of that. We wanted to share that information. So we did a lot more public presentations and things like that. We also reestablished our Police Explorer program. That's interacting with our youth and things like that. My hope is that someday, those explorers will maybe work for us someday. That's where I came from, from the Explorer program. We increased information sharing, both with you folks, city leaders, and also with the media and other agencies as well. We also implemented NICSIL, which is the Emergency Alert System, that we can send out text messages and things like that. Enhanced our customer service. We did many, many things, but just a few. We had some complaints where people thought they were getting hung up on by our dispatch. And that wasn't the case, but we have a lot of calls that come in our dispatch center, and we put people on hold. You know, we go something like, "Please hold," and then they put them on hold. Well, it sounded like it was dead air, and so people thought they were being hung up on. So what we did is we worked with a phone company. So what we did is, we worked with a phone company, and we now have a phone recording on that. So when you put on hold, it keeps that person occupied by listening, and you can do job, job flyers on that, and public safety information as well. If you've ever been put on hold, the phone line needs to go all the way through the city hall system, so. We increased our general healthfulness. You know, sometimes it just, it's just being a little bit more helpful. I asked our staff to, when they talk to people and deal with people, to try to put them in, especially with dispatch, I asked them to think about if it was their grandmother or their mother calling for help, how would you want that person to be, to be handled? We increased our community partnerships, both with citizens and businesses. We worked with businesses, like Inverness Shopping Mall. We had meeting, community meetings with them, and offered them advice, took some advice, and we're working together to try to make that a better environment over there. Employee recognition. Along with recognition, employees of their accomplishments via the city council presentations, we also, two officers received special awards. Sergeant Lenz received an award for valor for placing himself in harm's way while saving a hostage. Officer Franklin received a lifesaving award for pulling people from a burning building engulfed in flames. Both of those awards were done in front of you. Clayton Fire. This was a sad time for our community members. The cowardly act of arson caused devastating fire, also known as the Clayton Fire. It ripped through our nearest neighbors in the town. A lot of our friends and family were affected by that. One of the things that I was really happy about is our officers worked with outside eight law enforcement agencies, and we were able to evacuate nearly five thousand people safely from that, from that area. And during the week following, we provided around-the-clock patrol, looter patrols and things like that. And as far as I know, there was no burglaries that were afforded to us during that time. Marijuana. As I told you before, we believe marijuana had a direct impact to our violent crime rate. And so what we did is, we, we went after it aggressively. We concentrated on large-scale commercial growing operations. I don't know if they were cartel-related. We heard a lot about cartel-related grows and things like that. We just targeted large-scale growing operations. So in 2015, there were over five hundred that we knew about, large-scale grows. They ranged various sizes, but there were definitely over six marijuana plants, so a lot of the ordinances. Throughout the year, our investigations unit worked tirelessly to, to enforce this. They authored seventy search warrants and eradicated more than sixty thousand marijuana plants. During those services of search warrants, they, I think there was thousands of pounds of processed marijuana, and there was over a hundred thousand dollars seized in asset forfeiture pending after judicial asset forfeiture proceedings. Many, many, many firearms, hundreds of firearms were seized, and also ammunition. Many of these firearms were illegal weapons and possessed by people like felons that aren't supposed to be, have weapons as well. Next few slides are some photos of some things that we saw. This is what it's about right there, is money. This is other drugs that were found. This was in a marijuana grow that stemmed, that was brought to our attention through, through an assault that we arrived. The suspect was running out the back door, armed with that, trying to discard it when the officers approached. Illegal weapons, this AR-15 platform, which is illegal to possess in California. Houses converted to indoor grows. That entire house has been converted into a marijuana grow with the wiring problems and black mold issues and things like that. Firearms readily available in these houses. This is what it looks like inside a hoop house. We talked about hoop houses. That's the PVC plastic structures. That's what, that's what was grown inside a lot of them. Officer Leo Flores, he was the marijuana liaison officer that we selected to work with the investigations unit. Leo was a huge asset to us with that program, particularly because he speaks Spanish, and that, that was a huge help. He was able to work with Detective Cook and Detective Peterson and Snyder and Mark Barnes, and altogether, they, they're the ones that impacted the most of that marijuana. Circumstantially, Officer Flores is also, the employees nominate an employee of the year. He's our officer of the year as well. Detective Cook taking samples on marijuana grow investigation. Firearms again, readily available. That magazine is illegal to possess in California, standard brown magazines. Front door, shotgun right nearby. So when I talk to you about buying added safety equipment and things like that, I bought the officers' bulletproof helmets, so that, and other vest carriers and things and some inventory equipment for their safety. I knew that some of these things were dangerous. That's just one of the things that we found. New considerations. The passage of Prop sixty-four, that essentially passes recreational use of marijuana. It has reduced punishments and essentially eliminated penalties for crimes related to cultivation, possession, and sales of marijuana, essentially making them either not crimes or misdemeanor. Police K-9. We have a K-9 program that is funded through donations, primarily through donations. The only thing is the officer's salary that's paid for. Everything else comes from our community donations. They do a couple different fundraisers a year, and they've done an outstanding job with that. In 2015, we were able to purchase two dogs, two dogs that were placed in outdoor homes. One of the things that we thought was a pretty neat idea is to work with elementary-age kids to name the dogs. So we did a little contest with drawings and things, getting our children involved with, with the partnership with the police department, and the dogs were named Zip and Bear. Zip is partnered with Officer Mark Harden, and Bear is partnered with Officer Travis Parsons. They're doing well, and if you guys remember, in the beginning of the year, we saw the officers training with their dogs with our vendor and trainer out in our city park. So that, that training was done right here, five weeks of training. And they were, both teams were certified through post standards. Animal control. The Support Services Commander oversees animal control. In 2016, our animal control officer was dispatched to three hundred and sixty-three calls for service, wrote eighteen reports, seven of which were animal cruelty-related, impounded six hundred and nineteen animals, issued one hundred and nine notices of violation, forty-five citations, and took a hundred and twenty-four animal bite reports, and issued over twelve hundred dog licenses. Most of the work in animal control throughout the year was done by one person. We were able to augment that by adding a kennel tech person and some help with, through Experience Works program, to do licensing and adopting programs and things like that. So that was, that was a big help, but we still have more work to do. Police volunteers, also known as VIPs, they are tremendous help to our law enforcement, all of our law enforcement communities. They help with traffic control. Some of them serve subpoenas, they write parking tickets, generally help clean up the offices, do some clerical work for us. There's, there's just many, many, many things that they help us with. We also have the Yana program here, which is you are not alone. They call senior citizens that would like to be called, and if, if they don't receive, if they don't pick up the phone, then an officer, a law enforcement officer gets sent to them. This is a, this is a big deal. Police volunteers logged over five thousand hours assisting our department this year. I'm just gonna read this because it makes me proud. "The men and women of the Clearlight Police Department have worked countless hours to serve our citizens. Their tireless efforts have had a positive impact in our community. As a leader, a supervisor, and a coworker, I am proud of the work we have accomplished. As a citizen and homeowner who is raising a family, clearly, I am very thankful to the dedicated employees that come to work every day to make our city a great place to live. We will continue to work hard to overcome new challenges as they are presented. We have already started identifying new goals and objectives for 2017. I'm proud of our community and proud of work for the Clearlight Police Department. I appreciate the opportunity to serve as the acting chief of police for the past year." And that concludes my report with 2017, Clearlight Police Department.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Very good report. All right, next on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is a time where you can come up and speak to the council on anything that is not on our agenda. We cannot respond, we cannot answer questions, we can't get into a dialogue with you because it's not an agenda item. So we ask that you bear with us while we sit and smile and look at you, when we cannot respond. If we can, we will direct you to someone in our staff who may be able to help you after the meeting. So we have three minutes allotted to anyone who would like to speak. I have one person who submitted a request card for public comment, and that's Ms. Rose Anderson. Ms. Anderson, if you could come to the podium. You have three minutes to talk to the council.
Evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Okay, you know, we've been having the issues of the homeless. I've been talking a lot with them. I've been working with them a lot, because I'm one of them. We are getting more and more homeless people every day behind Raze. I know you guys are working on trying to find the resources to help the homeless, to prevent any more becoming homeless. There's other issues that they have that you guys are putting us on the back burner when we should be put first, because we're more important than most things, because we are homeless, we are citizens of Clearlight, and we should come first. And they're wondering why we can't, why we're being put on the back burner. We got the tiny homes, that was a project through Joyce Adams and everything else for the homeless. That was the project for the homeless to get into a place, whatever our property. Well, that's also been put on the back burner for FEMA, the fire victims, and everything else when it was intent for us homeless. They have a lot of issues about that, too. Let's see here, there's, they feel that, the homeless feels that you guys are trying to pawn us off onto different counties. When they have, different counties has their own problems with the homeless. I did do some research on homeless in some counties, like San Jose is putting the homeless up in old motels and old buildings where they're being monitored, and it's working very successfully. I mean, it's a thought to look into. Pretty much, we're just trying to figure out, you know, what's the plan, what's going on? You know, there's a lot of people out there that are vets, there's a lot of disabled people out there, there's mental illness people out there. And like I said, we're getting more and more camps every day behind Raze, more and more homeless. I mean, it's pretty much, to us, it feels like you guys don't want to do anything about it, kind of like put it off, and they're trying to understand why. And, you know, the bridge has resources, but not the resources that would help the homeless. And if you guys, you know, can take time to find the resources that is willing to help the homeless, we would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Is there anyone else who would like to address council on this topic, public comment? Seeing none on closed public comment, move on to the consent agenda. Any changes to the consent agenda?
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Motion to accept.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, and Ms. Overton is absent. Moving on to the, okay. Item five, which is consideration modification to the 2017 Mayoral appointments. There was a change needed to add an alternate to the Lake Area Planning Council and the Lake Transit. I asked Mr. Harris if he would be able to do that, and he accepted that, and that was my recommendation. That is my recommendation to you. I'm hoping that you would approve that appointment.
I'm good.
Need to make a motion to confirm the Mayoral appointment. You know, I do need to do that, Vice Mayor. Just, any questions? Anyone from the public wishing to discuss my appointment of Councilmember Harris to the Area Planning Commission and Lake County Transit? Seeing none, but a thumbs up. I will close public comment on this item, bring it back to Council for action.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Harris, for taking this on, and I'd like to make a motion to confirm the mayor's appointment and changes, and approve the changes to the FPC, oh, that's different, mayor's appointment changes.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, and Ms. Overton is absent. Moving on to number six. Mr. Jones.
Seemed like that was two separate motions.
Yeah, I think to be safe, let's do a second motion.
All right.
And that's because the position is a pay county position, like twenty-five a month or whatever it is.
Right, and it's within our conflict of interest code if somebody is required to submit.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to approve the changes to the FPC four, eight oh six.
Motion to have a second. Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There are none, and Ms. Overton is absent. Item six, consideration of Mayoral appointments to the Code Enforcement Ad-Hoc Committee and the Universal Garbage Ad-Hoc Committee. Taking into consideration that we had a couple of new council members, I moved, and looking at what you were looking for from our last meeting, Mr. Vice Mayor, to enhance our code enforcement process, I'd like to ask you, and ask you if you would sit on that, along with Mr. Bennett, bringing some good experience, I think, to that ad hoc. Willing to do so?
I believe I am.
Yes. Very good. And I also would like to continue on the Universal Garbage Ad-Hoc Committee, and I've asked Mr. Harris if he would join me on that.
May I say?
Thank you very much, sir. Would anyone else like, would anyone like to make a comment on this? I'll open it up for public comment at this point. Any questions about my appointments? This is your time to speak. Seeing none, I'll close that, bring it back to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to confirm your appointments to Code Enforcement Ad-Hoc Committee and the Universal Garbage Ad-Hoc Committee.
Have a motion and a second. Have a motion and a second by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There are none, and Ms. Overton of course is absent. Moving right along down to the next item, which is the Moving right along down to the next item, which is the City Manager and the Council reports. Mr. Jones, will you?
Yes, happy to make that on behalf of the City Manager, who is improving his skills as City Manager at the League of California Cities City Manager Conference. He had three items he wanted me to convey. One is to remind the council and the public that we have a special meeting on February 16th. That is to discuss the mid-year budget and a strategic planning meeting. Also, the general plan update, we've been working hard on that. Mr. Price presented that to the Planning Commission last week on the 31st. It was approved, and will be coming to the City Council for action at the next regularly scheduled council meeting, which is February 23rd. So we look forward to that, and for our public's participation in that as well. And lastly, the city is still accepting applications to fill the vacated seat from Commissioner Cheryl Hutchinson from the Planning Commission, and would encourage folks to apply as we go over those applications and bring those to the council at the appropriate time. That is a report on behalf of Mr. Poulson, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Yes?
I'd like to ask a question. Ms. Swanson, is the deadline the 16th of February for the applications for the Planning Commission? I just want to make sure the public's aware of what the deadline is.
I believe that it is the 16th of February.
Thank you.
Which is a Thursday. Next Thursday. Okay, very good. Mr. Harris, do you have a report?
I've gotten to delve into the Solid Waste Task Force, which-
Pretty exciting.
It is. I've gotten to learn a lot in a very rapid fashion, which is fantastic because there's a lot of things going on with that. You know, our landfill here has been, has been overutilized for quite a few years, and it's getting pretty full. So there's a lot of ideas on the table right now on what to do next. The expansion of the facility is probably going to be absolutely necessary in some fashion. And then there's a lot of other consideration being given to some other aspects of it through a diversion process. Obviously, where we're headed as a society is towards the idea of recycling. And we have to incorporate that into the concept as well. So there's been a lot of talk about what avenue to take. Also in that discussion has been some, some topics regarding universal disposal within the city of Clear Lake, and that's going to be coming back on the forefront on one of the things that I'm going to be working towards, coming to some sort of a resolution on where we're going to head with that. So, it's exciting times for the city. Obviously, we're trying to make a lot of, a lot of things finally take shape. And as far as the landfill, to kind of put it in perspective, pretty much any of the ideas on the table are going to take somewhere in the neighborhood of eight years to, to come to fruition. And we're factoring that, as it sits right now, at the continued rate of landfill usage, we have about eight years left on the landfill. So, if we, if we make things happen right now, we're going to get to the point of expanding the landfill just in time to really continue operation. So, kind of a critical time to make a huge decision. So anyways, so I've learned a lot. We've had two meetings, once on the second over in Lakeport, and another one today. And Doug Aaron is joining me on both of those, and it's been quite an educational process. I'll keep you informed as we go further into this thing, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Recently, I attended the AVA meeting, which is concerning the abandoned vehicles. We met last week up in Lakeport where a chair, vice chair were selected. The process moving on, is moving forward. There needs to be an audit as to the number of vehicles that have been towed by county, I believe, and-
For the whole program.
The whole program. And also, a certain amount of that money, in addition to $350,000 that's in there is set aside for administrative costs. So there's a certain amount of administrative work that has to be groundwork, that needs to be done on that, and it is moving forward. Jeff Smith is the chairman, and Mo Simon is the vice chair. So, they're both very involved in it as representatives from our council, which is me, and from Lakeport City Council. And Doug Aaron is involved in it as his chief cellie, acting chief cellie, and the county code enforcement. So it's, it's moving along, but may not seem very rapidly, but considering what needs to be done for the laid groundwork on it and the bureaucracy of the state of California, it's moving forward. So hopefully, this is February, I think we're looking at, maybe hopefully April, maybe we can start getting the funds to come into the cities to begin the abandoned vehicle abatement. Also, this week, we had an area planning commission meeting attended by the mayor and myself up in Lakeport, which had to do with numerous transit concerns within the county, changing of bus routes, reduction of funds from the state of California, surprise, increase, probable increase in gasoline taxes because with the advent of new vehicles that use less gas, and electric vehicles, and in many parts of our state with bicycles and so on, the gas taxes aren't rolling in as they have been. So there are some fiscal concerns with our local transit authorities. But again, those are being addressed, I think, in a very responsible manner. And again, it's an ongoing process, it's being evaluated. I want to commend Acting Chief Lieutenant Sully on his presentation for the police department. I thought it was excellent. I was happy, very happy to see the new organizational chart is in place. I think that it's long overdue for making the department work in a more efficient way, distributing the workload between two division commanders. I hope to see that continue. Also, something is very important for the citizenry to understand is that he mentioned in passing the proactive that stops what the officers are able to make when they're not on calls for service or writing the reports, everything requires reporting, everything. That is proactive work by our officers. And that in itself, they're contacting people who are potentially out there to do you and I harm, or property harm. And our officers are out there 24/7, and they don't stop. And we need to keep that in mind. So an excellent presentation, and kudos to your department.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I came here, I want to say it was a week ago, and watched the swearing-in of our newest dispatcher. And there's a certain importance in that position, where those are the eyes and ears for our police officers that are out there. And to have two with a third potentially coming soon, that's going to be amazing for our police officer. So I was really happy to be there to introduce myself to the new dispatcher, who I believe is Diana?
Diana.
Diana Flores. And I hope that she's doing well in her first few weeks on the job. I also met with city staff to speak about code enforcement, just to see if my mind is way off base as to what I would like to see going on in our city, so that we can have a legitimately realistic conversation when we meet as a ADHOC committee. So I appreciate staff taking their time to discuss those things with me. Councilmember Bennett, tell me if I'm wrong, but were there 10 CC4C members that showed up at the last AVA meeting?
Yes, I believe there were.
And I want to give kudos to that, because that, that group goes all the way to Lakeport to ensure the support what we need to get here in our city. They weren't elected officials, they're, they're not getting paid for any of this. They're volunteering their time to ensure that the future of Clear Lake is going to be cleaner and better. And I just want to give them kudos for, for making every step and every action that they make here for our city. And without them, we would not be in the pace and position that we are today. I might be stealing some of your thunder on this one, but I want to make sure everybody is aware that there is a measure on the ballot that's going to come out on March 7th. It's a special election, it's Measure D. It is for the Lake County Fire Protection District. They will be doing a town hall meeting in Lower Lake at the Brick Hall this Monday, February 13th at 6:00 PM. And I think it would be who of you to attend the meeting, learn what the measure is all about, so when March 7th comes around, you're ready to vote in the direction that you want to vote. And ever since we stopped meeting for the strategic plan and the marijuana committees, I feel like I'm playing hooky. There's just nothing else to say. Done with my report?
Always something to say.
Anything to say?
Thank you, Mr. Rose.
Thank you.
Well, on the 31st of January, we had a joint meeting here at City Hall. Thought that was pretty productive, we've got, I think, some, some good feedback. April 1st, or, I'm sorry, February 1st, I went with our City Manager, T. Ukaya, to meet with California League of Cities and other city leaders in our region to look at some of the effects that Prop 64 has already had, and we anticipate. So that marijuana ADHOC that we thought we were almost done with, will be coming back and looking at some other things that have happened in the state that I think we need to do some modifications. I'd like to thank Mr. Jones and his firm for helping us with that, navigating through that new, that new proposition and new law, so we can be effective yet compassionate. Met with a few citizens here in Clear Lake, looking for programs and things that we can do to help the homeless. Looking not just, some, some are looking at how can we help them as a group, and others are looking at how can we look at some of the folks that are the worst and have the most disabilities, and how can we help them individually. So I'm encouraged. What I can say is, I'm hopeful that within the next month, or hopefully not through March, but in March, we can start looking at ways to help at least some individuals. And I'd also like to give kudos to St. Louis Clear Lake Hospital. They're doing some fine work, and have signed some good people to help us in this, in this effort, to help some of our most needy. We did meet here on Monday for a Measure D town hall. I'd like to thank everyone who came and participated in that, they got some good feedback. I would say 100% positive in support of our fire department, and thank you again for bringing that up. We need to get the community's involvement in this, we need to have people know that it is coming up March 7th. And if people have questions, what's it about, you know, where's this money going to go if it's approved? We would like to answer those questions. So if you can, come to Lower Lake, we'll be meeting at the Brick Hall, and you can ask the folks that it means the most to, and that's our firefighters. So, I believe that's it for me on my report. I am going to kind of catch our public works director maybe flat-footed, but we've had some rain as of late, the lake is up. And Mr. Aaron, would you mind briefing us on the state of the city as far as our drainages and public safety and the docks?
As we came into the winter, we've been, we've been pretty steadfast. Actually, Tim Sully was commenting today on public works. We haven't had a whole lot of issues up till this week. As you all know, we pulled, we shut down the harbor this week, Monday. The ramps have been, we pulled the pins out, released the pressure. What was happening on our landing docks, and the ramps are like this, at an angle, and they're, they're putting undue stress on the, on the landing. So we un-pinned them, the harbor shut down until further notice. We probably will not reopen them until the lake gets down at least around seven foot, around there. Today was the first day we, we had a road closure. Me and Tim Sully were out doing an assessment on the city today. We had to close Lower Lake Shore. Lake Shore all the way out to Goose Neck is, is really close. Hopefully, we won't have to close it, but kind of, we may have to close it tonight or tomorrow. We got, got hold of, what was his name? Oh yes, I can remember his first name, Dale.
Dale.
Dale. Got ahold of him and part of him, our situation down there. So they're on board with Oh Yes, if we need their help, we're going to just make the call. As far as San Joaquin, it's holding pretty good. We've got a couple little, little slides, nothing major. Keeping our fingers crossed, we're watching that. Guys are out there working around the clock, the guy, staff worked all night last night. Limited staff, we only had two guys working today. We're doing the best we can, and we're, on wood, we haven't had any really significant issues. So that's, that's my report for now.
Thank you. I know that you had set aside some sand and what, and sandbags. I know it was kind of a first come, first served at the corporate.
We called in probably 60 yards of sand. There's also grindings. We're limited on bags, we're not putting out in bulk. We're putting out small corn bees and people are coming.
Where can people get their own bags and come to get sand?
The local hardware stores and Lanes Haven.
Okay.
They also have bags as well. But the sand is there. So, you know, we're inviting people to come get what they need.
And just for the public information, what is the condition of Clear Lake? We've got a lot of debris out there, is the speed-
Clear Lake is currently, about an hour ago, we were about 9.35. We're projected to be at 9.9, which is probably Saturday, maybe Sunday. We've got a lot of water coming in, they're letting out as much water out of the, out of dams possible. It's got a lot of water coming in.
Yes.
Nice thing is, we are not supposed to have any rainfall for our next four or five days. A little bit of sprinkling, so hopefully we can get the lake down.
Thank you, sir, appreciate your, your report. Anything else for the good of the order?
I had one more thing.
No.
I was just, I was trying to get your attention when you were doing your mayor's appointments. We'll probably have to come back, but after our meeting today, we need to switch. Me and Phil's role on committee members, I'm the member, he needs to be the member, I need to be the alternate. He fills the voting member.
All right, I don't think that we can correct that tonight, so I'll have to bring it back.
Bring it back, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you motioning.
That was brought to our attention today at the meeting today.
I thought it was just a wave.
If it's, if it's an item that we're just fixing from a vote we'd made earlier, you can reopen that meeting, re- amend that motion, and then take public comment again.
Let's get it done, that's how we like to work. Okay, so moving back to mayor role appointments, item number five. I would like your, your support in making modifications as Mr. Aaron has enlightened us with, and swapping responsibilities between Councilmember Harris and our public work director, Mr. Doug Harris, or Doug Aaron. So with that, is there a public comment on this item? Do it. Go ahead and do it, thank you very much. Anyone else? I have consensus. I'll bring you back for council for action.
I'll make a motion to make myself the primary voting member of the Solid Waste Task Force. Doug Aaron, second member.
Alternate?
Alternate.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Second.
Mr. Sabatier, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No, Ms. Overton's still absent. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, thank you all very much, and thanks for catching that, Doug. Your journey.